Good evening and welcome to the July 24, 2025 meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. It is 6:31 and we are meeting this evening at the Lakeville Police Station at 323 Bedford Street. We have late cam recording. Is anyone else recording? Hearing none. We do have a quorum this evening. Mr. Wilka, Mr. Gavall, Mr. Lodge, myself, and we also have Donna Gueye, who is our newest associate member, joining us this evening. And to get right to our first agenda item, we have a meeting with Serpent at 6:30 for kickoff with kickoff meeting for rules and regulations update. So welcome.
Thank you for having me. For the record, my name is Taylor Perez. I'm the Director of Housing and Research at Serpent. We are your regional planning agency. And we have worked with you folks in the past when you're Master Plan and Housing Correction Plan. So it's great to be back. It's been, you know, almost a year or two now. So happy to be here. I don't have too much on my end. I'm just going to give you folks an idea of what we've been doing on the backend. I know we kind of slow walked this up to the fiscal year, so I appreciate you folks kind of bearing with us. But now we're moving full steam ahead. So I will give you an update on that. And then I'll just have a couple of questions from myself and from other team members who are working on this. And then I really just want to hear from you folks if there's areas of particular interest that you want us to focus on. I know you folks, for example, recently completed a stormwater bylaw, you know, references to that, all sorts of things. So just for some background, we have reviewed the two drafts that Kathy sent. I think there was one from May that still had some track changes. And then we received a more updated version. So we were cross referencing between the two. And then in the background, we've just been looking at other communities' rules and regulations. I know a point that Kathy made was that you want to compare fees and procedural timelines, et cetera. So we're doing that in the background as well as just noting in there to check certain references to statutory requirements or, you know, the zoning, et cetera. And so that's all kind of been going on in the background. We're also noting areas that we might want to add additional clarification. And then, you know, like I said, we're going to review the recently completed stormwater bylaw and make sure that that is correctly incorporated in there. And I know one of the kind of major things we wanted us to incorporate was different road standards. So we are working with Sean Hilton, who is my colleague from the Transportation Department at Serpent, to kind of work on those standards. So that's all going on in the background right now. And I know that I have a couple of questions, one particularly about road standards from Sean that he wanted me to bring to you folks. In the 2020 Master Plan, there was a reference to creating a complete streets policy. Because there's a reference in the regulation saying, you know, creating an attractive street layout, things like that. And so our goal is always to make what could be interpreted as subjective, as objective as possible. So is that something that you folks would be interested in seeing done as a part of this work to complement it? I think they could potentially find it through some of their Mast dot work. We can definitely find it through some of this as well. So if you think that would be a beneficial kind of accompaniment to the update, let us know. And we'd be happy to do that for you folks.
Okay, that's so it's interesting because we actually just recently met with Master Plan.
I saw that in the news. I was like, how typical.
It was very, very quickly because we just met with them on Monday.
Monday.
Yeah, so one of the things they brought up was sidewalks. So we, so when we have subdivisions come to us, one of the common waivers that is requested is sidewalks. And, you know, one of the Master Plan members questioned, is it for both sidewalks or just one? And really, when it's, for example, a subdivision, we just recently had that was added on to an existing subdivision. And there's no sidewalks in the existing subdivision. So their whole point was, well, there's no existing sidewalks. Why would we be required to provide them? So that's something that we've run into and definitely would like to address with this update. And I think maybe having something that specifically says, you know, all new subdivisions or however, you know, you find that is best to word it, but to have only exceptions for certain situations. And maybe it is, if it's an existing subdivision without a sidewalk, then that's allowed. But every other subdivision go for it. And so with ZVA, when they have someone looking for a variance, they have to prove hardship. So I don't know if that's something that should be incorporated, that it should only be if they can show hardship. But I think we do, because Master Plan asked about it. And, you know, unfortunately, when we have, you know, developer pushing and making points that make sense, then that has been something we've run into.
Okay, gotcha. Great. So I will make a note of that. I'll talk with Sean about that. And I can get more details on, you know, for complete streets policy, what that might look like. I think he gave us an example for Middleborough. I can find a couple of other ones and ensure that I get them to Kathy to get to you folks to take a look at. And then, you know, just through an email chain or something, she can let us know if that's something that you folks would be interested in.
That'd be great. Yeah.
Great. And then this is kind of where I want to turn to you folks and say, is there anything else beyond? Again, here's the main points that I have, terminology, references, you know, again, to statutory requirements, et cetera, timeframes, fee schedules, including the stormwater standards and then the road standards. Is there anything else that you folks would like us to be thinking about as we continue to review this?
Lighting?
What's that?
Lighting.
Lighting.
Well, we have, so we have a lighting bylaw, like the dark sky complaint. So one of the things, another, another common waiver that is requested is, so we have the requirement for streetlights, but we don't have streetlights in town. So we do allow them to do driveway lanterns.
At the entrances.
Yeah, at the end of their driveways. So that has been something that we're common, commonly allowing.
Okay, so just like, you know, putting that in writing, that that is acceptable?
Yeah, or maybe changing from streetlight to driveway lanterns.
Gotcha. Okay, just like pivoting completely to that. Okay.
Right unless.
Well, I guess it's street lighting, right? Because some of this is written as residential, but then also, you know, other rules and regs, right? Fall into commercial kind of spaces too, right?
Well, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so that's true. Yes, we don't want to take it. If it's commercial, we don't want to say no to the streetlights. So.
More specific.
Yes, specific to residential, I guess.
Yeah, I guess we're just trying to, I guess, give the option for the residential. So we're not seeing like a list of 18 standard waivers. Like we started making a list of 18 waivers, but if we could try to avoid the point of having a million waivers for the same ones over and over again. And then, and then I feel like you said, sometimes the list gets long and then just eat, they, they throw a bunch in there so that we pick off the four or five, you know, low hanging fruits so that they can get away, you know, not get away from it, but like try to like deflect from the other ones.
That makes sense for sure. Sorry to interrupt. If you folks are putting together a list of common waivers or you have an idea of that, that would be great information for us to have, even if not now, just because we can kind of try to look.
Probably go back to the last few ones and see.
Right.
Well, I know, so street trees is one because it'll tear up the pavement if the roots get, you know, onto the pavement. So we do allow that, but we do look for maintaining existing plantings in lieu of that.
I know it's usually the underground utilities, but we usually kind of push for that, but depending on where.
The underground utilities, that's not something we typically are in favor of waiving.
Are you folks looking for any specific species of street trees? That's kind of a super random one, but I do remember when I was reading through Thinking Now.
There was, so there's a deer resistant evergreen that we had.
It was, it's almost like an arborvitae of types, but it is definitely deer resistant. It's a little bit fuller of a plant and it's an evergreen. And we would have to pull up the last, the last one we just went through. Specific species.
Okay, yeah, I'd be interested because I know in there it just said.
Leland cypress. Leland cypress is a deer resistant, so that's one that we would tend to favor.
And it does get a little fuller. So if there is anything that needs to be, you know, covered up or whatnot, it's a little bit natural to the habitat of New England and so forth. So.
Yeah, we can explore some of that with the Environmental Department as well, but just to kind of get an idea.
Our open space committee actually has an excellent listing of native plantings as well.
Anything else major that you would want us to be thinking about?
Those are the main items that we've discussed.
Yeah. Nothing jumps out right now.
Other than.
Is there any like diagrams or things that you think would be beneficial in there?
Can you cite some examples, like what kind of?
So sometimes, you know, as a part of it, it's, I think, probably more common in form based code. And that's something that I would, you know, be more, my colleague Robert Cabral is not here, but he has a background in landscape architecture and is super familiar with all of that kind of stuff. But, you know, even just like, not design guidelines necessarily. We don't have to make a whole design guideline document, but if there are common things that you're referencing, again, kind of in the same way of like common waivers or whatnot, or common things that you're like, it should look like this versus that.
No, I'd love to see some of those included.
I can talk to Rob about that.
Yeah, maybe some examples that he's done before, see if we want to put them in, you know what I mean? Even if it's similar, we can kind of tailor it to like what we, what we need, but.
I will ask Rob about that. I think he'll have some good input for sure. And then I guess this is kind of more boutiquey, but do you want us to like lay it out in a nice, you know, PDF format? Do you want us to keep it in a Word doc? You know, what's your preference?
Probably Word, just in, you know, we definitely want a Word copy of it.
We have this in Word, right?
Yeah, we do have it in Word, but if it looks, you know, like a nice PDF to upload to the website would be great.
Yeah, we can probably pass along both where you'll have a Word version of it. And then we can lay it out, you know, diagrams and whatnot.
Because I think at least the word to begin with as the preliminary to kind of see where you change, that you can track the changes and kind of see where things change versus trying to go back and forth. But then that way, then obviously PDF is the final.
Gotcha. Okay, yeah, so we can pass along both at the end too. You know, and if you ever want, if you made major changes to it for some reason and you're like, could you put it in that layout that you made? Like you have M A hours and whatnot, all sorts of ways that we can just do that. That's no problem. So we'll pass along both, but I was just curious if that was something that you'd be interested in. Anything else?
Jack, what do you think? Anything that comes to mind?
No, wait, we talked about it before and I, you know. Yeah, I mean, I agree with whatever has been said here. So no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make any changes. I'm not.
David?
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good.
And Dan, you have nothing else, John?
I'm good.
Donna, any questions?
Not yet. All right.
Great. So I took notes. We'll work with Kathy to communicate further. And then, you know, once we're feeling at a substantial spot, hopefully it's the end of July now. Maybe, you know, we come back in like early to mid September with a nice draft, some notes and go from there.
Works good.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, excellent.
All right. Thank you, folks. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Be in touch.
Appreciate it.
Awesome. Thanks. Have a good night. You too. And I'll see you in August.
We have annual meeting in September, so maybe we'll see you folks there.
Oh, and actually, before you leave, just because we have it a little later on, the OSRD update. So we had talked about using Serpent Hours, but you're going to help apply for this grant to.
Gotcha, right.
What would the, my only question is, what would the timeframe? Just because we're hoping to get those three things tied.
So are you working with Danica and everyone, Michelle Tanner?
Oh, yes. So it's not you as much?
Yeah, I don't think it's probably through Environmental because they're wrapping up a grant with the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs on an OSRD review. So my guess is that it's either through one of their programs. But if you'd like, I can ask Danica and Michelle and have them, you know, give us a timeline.
Yeah, that was my only question was just the timeline.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And do we want to take a brief intermission?
We have to wait seven hours, right?
Kathy can pass out some.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. I want to make that motion to.
I make a motion that we take a quick recess in about 15 minutes.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're going to take agenda item number six, the Lakeville Country Club Golfer's Way. Modification to plan, possible vote, out of order, just before the hearing start at seven. So if you would.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and also fellow board members. So the reason we're here is there was, in the original engineering plan, the way it was drawn up, it was actually going to take away my solar farm and transform and all the high voltage stuff that I had there. Which I didn't realize that until I really looked at the drawing and saw my little pole was in the middle of a road. And so I asked the engineer and, and also towns, the town engineer as well, if there was a possibility, we could just change this a little bit. So that was the only reason we made the change. Drainage and everything else stays the same. I believe you have a copy of a plan shown. Actually, the fighter department, we did do a review for him and I believe he was okay with it. He emailed me saying that. I don't know if he gave you anything in writing yet.
I don't have it, no.
You don't have anything from the chief yet? Okay. But basically it's, the way it's laid out, once they pull in, they'll be literally pulling into a park a lot if there was any problem with their radius. And one of the things the engineer wanted me to mention is the island itself is not going to have any curbs on it. So if they had to drive on the grass for some reason, it's not going to affect anything as far as that goes. And in his email to me, I believe he was all set with it, but I'd rather he sent you something. Don't know if I'm here for any other part of that, but I do appreciate the boards, the opportunity to make, you know, this possible change.
Sure. So I think, and this was all sent over to peer review to review.
Yes.
You haven't gotten anything back from them? Okay. And then you had a question about noticing? Is that what it was?
Yeah, just because we, they've never done that, like had a change. And the change actually requires an additional waiver. Does, is that just a vote? Like I looked at the approval and it seems like it's, they determine if it's, if that is needed.
Sure. So thank you. So Amy Westle, Town Council. So under General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81 T, it states that before approval modification and approval or disapproval of the definitive plan is given, a public hearing shall be held by the planning board. It goes on to about how, you know, the public, in a notification of the time.
So we do need it to be.
So since this is a modification, it would need a public. Particularly because they are looking for an additional waiver. I think if it was a minor slash clerical, you know, a public hearing would be necessary, but that is in the statute.
All right. So we'll have to notice that and get it back on the agenda. Okay.
Madam Chair, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I thought there was something in the agreement that the town engineer could make, could approve changes on her own or his own, whoever the town engineers in this, that was my understanding.
So I don't have the. Okay, yeah, so I don't have the condition in front of us, but I think the common condition says that if it's deemed significant or not.
Yes, if it's insignificant, the town engineer or the building, sometimes the building commissioner can make the change. But under the subdivision control law and under 81 R and under your rules and regulations, the planning board has to make the, has to determine whether a waiver is granted or not.
It would require a public hearing.
Hey, I might get this road done one of these days. Can I, can I ask one thing? There must be a deadline when I have to get this road started or done or whatever. Is it two years or three years?
So we changed the covenant where it says three years.
So it's still three years? So it's three years from November or whatever the date of its date was. I just want to make sure I don't miss that date.
Well, I think it's three years from the date of approval.
Yes.
Okay, because I thought somewhere it said two and I just wanted to.
It's, I think the standard timeframe is two, but when we had asked Amy about it, she said, well, if we're just right there, give it three years.
Okay, that's all I was really concerned about. So I could definitely wait for the obviously public.
And this new waiver didn't start, wouldn't reset that, right?
No, it wouldn't. But also depending on when you were grant, when your permit was granted, you might be under the permanent extension. So when you get close to the expiration, you can figure it out.
I think I am getting close to it. That's why.
When was it granted?
I think it was like November.
This is August 7th, 2023. August 7th, 2023, that's when the town clerk received this.
So you are, you're within the permanent extension.
Is that what it is? Okay. So for the record, glad you're here. No, I'm glad you're.
That's off the top of my head.
Well, I have heard both. That's why I was, I'll follow up if, if maybe.
I'll follow up too.
Yeah, if that public hearing says we need to get an extension, maybe we do it all at the same time if that's.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you very much, everyone. Thank you. We you too.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service to the town.
Thank you.
We're at 6:55.
Michelle?
Yes.
Would you, would you be okay with me talking about Bella Way?
Yeah, that's.
Because that doesn't have a time, so I can give you an update on that.
Sure.
Sure. I was going to say, I was trying to go, yeah.
Take it off the list, right?
Yeah.
Five minutes, James. Five minutes.
All right, we're going to take out of order, agenda item number eight, administrative update, Bella Way update, possible vote.
All right. Good evening, Jamie Bissonette, Zenith Consulting Engineers for the record. I spoke with Mr. Palucci. I did not know this was on the agenda, but I did, I saw it when I was in, in the hallway. Bob has had work going on this week, so he's given the go ahead to Red Lawn to put the level course on the side of the pavement. My understanding is they went down this week and cut the grass for the swale and they started removing the silt fence. It was proving a little bit harder, so they were going to get additional equipment today and go back to try to complete removing the silt fence along the swale. My understanding is that he's contacting John Malidi for the fencing in the back. And I still don't have 100% clear picture on the vegetation on Mr. Sasse's property, which is kind of in the back where the previous, a butter had cleared back into.
Oh, wooded area there?
And they wanted us to plant a couple of, a couple of trees in that area, but that will be taken care of. But there is motion moving forward on it now. I know it's stagnant for probably six months. But I did get that update this week. It was just coincidental.
Excellent. Yeah, the, the only reason we were going to ask her is because we hadn't heard anything back. So.
Yeah, no, and rightfully so. I checked in on it and I checked to Derek. So that's the update. That's what I have. I have not been down to verify it. I'm sure you guys are welcome to take a swing by and verify it, and I will too, but that's, that's what I'm told.
Excellent.
All right.
Thank you, Jamie.
I'll see you guys in a couple of weeks probably anyway, so we can talk if something's not done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
6:58.
Yeah.
Something that I think we can do real quick is the other administrative update item from the Arts Council. They are requesting regarding the new center stage. Thank you. To avoid confusion and for continuity, the Arts Council respectfully asks that the structure behind the historical Town Hall slash House building and in front of the Lakeville Public Library be referred to as Center Stage. All of our publicity for use of the structure with and without a cover has always been called Center Stage since 2013, when the stage was built and concerts are performed on. We would like to continue this practice and would appreciate the Select Board and other Town Committees, Commissions, et cetera, joining us in this effort. Thank you, Lakeville Arts Council Members, July 2025. So duly noted, Center Stage. One more minute.
Madam Chair, we're at seven o'clock.
Very good. Agenda item number two is a public hearing, special permit for 160 Bedford Street. Continue to this evening, a request for a special permit under section 270-7.412 to allow a commercial parking facility, possible vote. We do have another request from the applicant to continue. We are planning on foregoing our second meeting in August, so we would be continuing this to September 11th. Amy, are you available for September 11th? Okay, excellent. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to continue 160 Bedford Street to our next meeting, September 11th, 2025.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing, 7:00 PM, site plan review, accessory dwelling unit, ADU for 225 County Street, continue to this evening upon the application for an ADU site plan review and approval submitted by William Fuller for a proposed 900 square foot ADU with an attached garage and a garage underneath, possible vote. Good evening.
Good evening, Jamie Bissonette, Zenith Consulting Engineers. So last meeting, I think there was some discussion about the lot coverage and there was also some discussion about the draft decision. We did see the draft decision and I did add the lot coverage beyond the letter I gave you, but also to the plan. And so I think, I don't know of any other outstanding items, but.
Madam Chair, I'm Michael LaShaw, Attorney for the Office in Middleborough. I just have a quick question. I watched the earlier meetings on this hearing and it looked like Jack had missed the first one and that John had missed the second one. I'm just curious if the Mullins forms were filed.
Mine was filed on Tuesday.
You filed yours on Tuesday and Mr. Lynch, did you file one by chance?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you, did you file the letter with Town Clerk for this?
I'm missing a meeting?
No.
No, I'm sorry. I did not. I don't want to undo that.
So, and does that mean he can't vote on it? Okay.
Well, did you watch the hearings?
No.
Even if you vote against them, you cannot vote on it unless it's filed with Town.
Okay.
All right. So if anybody has questions for me on the plan, I'm happy to try to address them.
John, do you have questions? I know you weren't here for the last one.
No, I think, yeah, I think after watching it, I know there was, I see the, the deed. And I think the one question was like the two lots and I guess it's being considered one. Again, I know it was bought as one property, but two lots, two addresses. So that, but they're fine to be used, I guess, combined for the lot coverage and stuff like that. That just was more questions for us. I think I had brought that up.
Yep.
Before and then the, I don't know, we did have the, the other questions about, and I think this was something Amy that we had asked you about the, the ADU and the accessory structure that fell under that, because this is kind of our first ADU in town. And I think, I don't know, that, where we landed with that officially.
Where you landed with that is that your, or where I landed with that, in my opinion, is that the 900 square foot ADU is within your jurisdiction.
The accessory building, the accessory structure is, that starts with the building commissioner. If for some reason the size of that minus the 900 square feet, if that triggers any kind of relief, that relief would be from the Zoning Board of Appeals under that bylaw section that provides, the bylaw section that provides that the size of the ADU or the size of the accessory structure is related to the size of the lot. I also did speak with the Assistant Attorney General from the Municipal Law Unit and she agrees with my interpretation, I guess I would call it, where you minus out the 900 square feet for the remainder of the accessory structure. And that will go to the building commissioner and the ZVA if necessary. So that's probably good information to share with ZVA as well, because I know that that's, they've already been seeing these accessory structure and knowing that ADUs can have that sort of overlap. Yes. So if you want to share with them as well, that'd be helpful. Yep.
So just for clarification, that means the ADU doesn't count towards the scale on the zoning chart? Am I corrected that? The nine, all right.
Yeah, that, that's.
It's a separate, it's like a separate line.
Completely, yeah.
Understood, thank you.
All right, were there any questions, comments, concerns regarding the decision?
I, I had, um, two, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Um, number four, um, after the appeal period is completed, the applicant shall provide a copy of the site plan for the Planning Board endorsement. Um, is that going to be a practice with the A D Us?
It is our hope that this would be the, um, the general decision standard.
The question, I guess.
Yeah, why wouldn't it? I mean, I don't know why, I don't know why, why there's a problem.
No, no, there, there, we're just wondering whether it's gonna be a letter of approval, uh, like a, a decision, or whether it's a signature block on the plan. Um, my thought when I read that was, it's just gonna be a decision letter. Mike says that it's going to be a signature block on the plan that you need to endorse, like a subdivision. And so we're kind of looking for clarification, not that there's an issue either way.
Right, because you don't have a signature block.
Yeah, a, and it's easy to add, it's just one of those things where.
It, it's a normal condition under your site plan. I did go back and I looked at, um, for example, the last site plan that we did, and you had that on there. All right, so we should just keep it consistent for A D Us? You might as well. Yeah. I, I mean, it.
Okay.
It.
And then the only other one was number nine, the A D U shall remain in single ownership of the principal single-family dwelling. Um, if, if the owner elected to subject the property to the condominium statute, that would effectively prohibit him from selling the A D U and the main house as a condominium unit. Um, I don't think your bylaw authorizes you folks to do that or impose such a condition.
So, um, under the A D U, the, um, the A D U has to be accessory, hence the name. Accessory dwelling unit, so, um, I think that condition is perfectly fine.
Um, if it's an attorney.
It keeps the, um, it keeps the attorney, it keeps the A D U, um, accessory. Now, there's other attorneys that do not agree with that, that's K P's, um, position on accessory dwelling units, is that they have to remain accessory.
There was a decision, um, from a Georgetown case that the A G had just issued, um, in June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. And that issue was discussed. In Georgetown, they, they actually had the, an ownership requirement in the bylaw. And basically what the A G said is, we don't know the answer to the question, uh, zoning controlled use. Um, but ownership, zoning can't control. Um, and the distinction between what Lakeville has and what Georgetown has, is Georgetown actually had that in its regulation, Lakeville doesn't have that. So I, I would push back against whether or not you can do it. Uh, to me, it's inconsistent with the purpose of the A D U, which is to, to, to get housing out there, affordable housing. Um, what would happen if, um, again, this person sold it and they wanted to move their child into it, and, um, they, they were doing it for the purpose of the child, trying to build some equity. I mean, you could buy, buy a house in Lakeville, it's six, seven, eight hundred grand, but maybe they could buy that small little unit as a condominium, and, you know, it's, it's two hundred grand. Um, again, I just, I don't, I think it's an unnecessary restriction.
So if you condo it and it goes to a separate owner, it's a principal use, it's not an accessory use. Okay, and so K P Law is our town council, and I. We also represent Georgetown. Definitely am gonna defer to town council for that, this is.
I'm just reading what the letter says, and it, it says town council needs to, to, to opine on it. And I'm not gonna tell you to disagree with the town council, I just don't think you have the authority to do it.
Okay. Understood. Anything else?
Uh, no, those are the only two issues I have.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
We got it this time.
Nope.
Okay. So would we like to close the hearing?
Yep. I'll make a motion to close the hearing for two twenty-five County Street.
Second?
Second. All in favor? Um, yeah. Jack can't vote.
He can't.
You're on the closing.
So, okay.
Yeah.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and we have the draft decision conditions. I have no edits to be made, except for just adding those highlighted items once we're done. And that is the decision that I sent back with Redline? Yes. Okay. Yes, and we did, we did check, um, number eight, it was all set. Okay, great. So, yeah, and just the one change is that we did add the both addresses. Okay.
Is, is that the new decision, other than what you had sent me?
Uh, yeah. Sorry. I think this is the one that I sent with the changes. And then, like I said, the address was changed.
So, so this is the one that Amy had looked at, opined on?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so would someone like to make a motion to approve the A D U and draft conditions decision?
Make a motion to approve the, um, yeah, what, the, the conditions, two twenty-five County Street. As drafted.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, all except for Jack. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Agenda item number four, public hearing, site plan review, twenty-eight Precinct Street. And I will read the public hearing notice. The Lakeville Planning Board pursuant to the Town of Lakeville Code bylaws, chapter two seventy, section two seventy dash six point seven, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, at seven P M. At the Lakeville Police Station, three twenty-three Bedford Street. The purpose of the public hearing will be to receive information and public comment on the following site plan review application. Twenty-eight Precinct Street, the applicant Andrew Sukforth, Town Administrator, on behalf of the Town at Lakeville, seeks site plan review and approval for the construction of a seventeen thousand forty square foot six-bay fire station with access from Bedford Street. The fire station will have onsite parking, a stormwater management system, utility connections, title five system, and pertinent site features. The application and assorted documents can be viewed in the Planning Department by appointment. Motion to open?
Uh, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for twenty-eight Precinct Street.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is open.
Can I see the, I moved that? See that on the screen? They moved the easel, can I see that? That's the wall.
Oh, oh, yeah, we can see it.
Okay. Sorry, just want to make sure that they can.
If it just was an ideal spot, then I can move.
The only thing is when you speak, if you could speak into a microphone, because they're recording us, yeah.
Awesome, all right, I'll move this a little closer, if that's all right?
Yep.
Yep.
Very good, thank you.
Ideal, all right.
Yep.
Uh, hello, uh, members of the, uh, Planning Board for Lakeville. Uh, my name is Spencer Linds, I'm with Par Corporation, I'm the Civil Site Design Engineer for Lakeville Fire Station. Uh, obviously, the address, um, it listed as twenty-eight Precinct Street, but, um, we're across the road here, um, or across the Ted Williams Drive here. Um, so not quite three twenty-three Bedford Street, but, uh, just about. Um, so here, I'm, uh, presenting today the Lakeville Fire Station. Um, it says seven, the footprint for the building is, uh, seventeen thousand forty square feet. And I just tried to get through, so obviously, in the existing conditions, we have, uh, about two acres of forest. Right? And, um, we're, uh, we're basically clearing these, uh, these trees out to make way for the fire station. Uh, we've gone through, um, conservation already and gotten approval from the Conservation Commission uh, to, to do the clearing and have the impacts to the natural resources that we're having, so long as they're mitigated with things like water quality treatment, uh, peak flow attenuation, um, and, uh, you know, gone through the N H E S P process, which we're, um, still actively in. So, uh, we've got approval for, uh, Concom recently, uh, this past Tuesday. Um, and in addition, the septic plan was also approved on Monday. So the general layout of the site is, we have this, uh, fairly wide, about a hundred and fifteen feet foot wide, uh, access drive for the fire station itself. The fire station is set back from the roadway, from the right away, uh, about ninety-four feet, I believe that is. Or from the right away is seventy-one feet, but from the roadway itself, it's, uh, it's about ninety-four feet. Um, and, uh, the reason for this is, it's sort of a balancing act between bringing the station close to the roadway, so it's visible. It's a public safety, uh, um, you know, sort of infrastructure, piece of infrastructure. So it needs to be visible, uh, from the roadway, it needs to be seen, uh, from both directions of travel. But it also needs to be far back enough from the roadway so that fire apparatus, uh, with their large swing radiator can swing into the site, pull into the bays, pull around the site, pull into the bays. Um, so, uh, you know, that, that creates the condition where we need quite a bit of pavement. So we have this, uh, sort of access around the back. In order to be able to back in and pull out, I've done all the truck routing for the apparatuses, apparatus, apparatus. Um, and so a, a, all the, all the, uh, vehicles, uh, you know, put into use by the fire department are able to sort of traverse the site, both, uh, around the station itself and then through the parking itself as well. So this parking lot in the back, uh, will be used just by fire personnel only. And this small parking lot in the front, um, is, uh, is sort of designated for public use and is open all the time. This parking lot in the back is gonna be gated. So, um, sort of moving into sort of the, the, the parking requirements, uh, this is, this is, a lot of this is sort of really just based on, um, the demands of the fire department, we sort of received their feedback. Given the, um, zoning bylaws and, uh, just the general planning bylaws, uh, in Lakeville, uh, don't necessarily call out, uh, a, a fire station specifically, um, and even less so, perhaps, say, a, a, a public safety building of this nature. So we're kind of going based off of, um, uh, information that we received from the fire department and the Fire Department Planning Committee. And so, um, you know, the demand for, you know, four spaces, uh, out front for the public, um, that was, uh, you know, sort of deemed by the fire department to be necessary. And then these two spaces are for, um, the fire chief, uh, and, and, um, other high-ranking, um, fire department personnel specifically, so they have easy access into the building. And then, uh, fire personnel specifically, um, you know, out back here. I believe forty spaces was the, uh, was the total here, um, that, uh, the fire department felt was, um, necessary. So that's what we went with. Um, obviously, when you have all this pavement, you need to handle the stormwater accordingly. And so that's what we're doing here on the drainage and utility plan. You can see we have quite a bit, uh, quite an extensive, um, piping network here associated with the building. Um, get a trench drain out front to prevent any runoff, uh, from the front of the building, um, uh, going into the roadway. Mass D O T doesn't like that, nor does, uh, anybody else, so we're controlling that. Sending it to an underground infiltration system that's underneath the public parking lot. And in the rear of the building, we have more conveyances planned, uh, a, outside of the, uh, concrete approach aprons for infiltration systems here in the parking lot and this infiltration basin out back. Um, and so this is where, uh, a majority of the peer review comments were sort of directed. Um, you can see that I submitted, you know, three different versions of this plan before we even came in front of you folks, and that was to sort of get through the peer review that we, um, had to go through for conservation. So really, you know, I know I've submitted three iterations of this plan, but the only material changes that you're really gonna be able to notice is, uh, some slight modification to the size and location of the septic system, which is now approved. Uh, a slight enlargement of this underground infiltration system, number two, uh, we basically just added a row. And, um, this berm was widened out to provide the, um, Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook mandated access around the basin itself. Um, so those are really the only changes that you'll be able to materially see. There are some other minor changes to rims and inverts that had to, uh, occur as a result. Um, there was some other data that we handed in to the peer reviewer. Um, but all in all, we, we made it pretty cleanly through the peer review process, and, um, that peer review process was closed in tandem with our, uh, Conservation Commission approval. Um, there are some other site features, some sort of miscellaneous site features, we have a transformer, a generator pad, a dumpster pad out back. Um, this sort of clear area out here, which we're not even, uh, proposing to sort of tamper with at all, is meant to be, uh, future training units, um, so we, they, uh, the fire department, uh, has these, like, basically, um, I don't know if ever as a kid, you folks, uh, like, when, they like filled up a trailer full of smoke and you like kind of crawled through it and stuff as a kid. Um, as a, a memory of mine at least, I, I think it's those, those types of units, um, along with maybe storage and such. Um, so that, there will be no impact associated with that, they're gonna put that in the lawn someday, but that's sort of a future, uh, consideration for them. Uh, additionally, we have a propane, uh, tank out back for gas utilities. Um, just trying to think if there's anything else, uh, there is obviously a planting plan somewhere back here in the distance. Um, can't quite get to it right now, but, uh, you folks have received that in addition to, uh, all of the electrical, uh, and lighting features, uh, associated with the site. Um, one of the big ticket additions to the fire department sometimes is the addition of a, uh, a light, like a traffic light or some sort of, uh, traffic light.
Just gonna ask that too.
There is, it was. It was deemed to be unnecessary by both the fire department and the, the committee at large. Um, traffic lights like that are very expensive, very, like, surprisingly expensive. Um, on top of the permitting that's necessary to go through Mass Dot is pretty extreme. Uh, Bedford Street, you can see quite a distance left and right as you're pulling out of here, so it was deemed to be, uh, unnecessary at this time. Um, you know, other, other considerations were made to make the site more visible. We did, uh, bring the clearing limit, uh, up as much as we felt reasonable through Concom, uh, to do so. So this, um, this station will be very visible, and so the, the need for a traffic light, um, just isn't really necessarily there. Um, and that discussion was also bounced off of our traffic engineers with Par Corporation, so there was some sort of professional consultation that also, uh, helped the committee arrive at that decision. Um, you know, at the very outset of this, uh, process, we had done, you know, traffic studies, looked at, um, the need for a light, and it was determined that one wasn't necessary. Um, beyond that, I don't believe I have anything more to ramble on about. Um, like I said, everything has been professionally vetted by a peer reviewer, and we've received a thumbs up from them. So, uh, we are in good standing. Uh, at this point, through Mass Dot, we've submitted everything, have not yet received comments back from them. Um, but I don't expect too extreme of a comment back from them. Uh, part of the reason for that being is, um, when you clear, you know, this amount of woods, and it's all in sandy soils, in the existing conditions, barely anything runs off of the site to begin with. And so in the proposed conditions, you know, we're required to make even less stormwater run off the site. So that means we need to basically, like, attenuate this whole extra amount of water, because more water runs off of pavement. But in addition, there was so little water running off the site in the existing conditions that the, creating an offset there is extremely difficult. And so one of the things we did was actually accept Mass D O T drainage in order to create an even further offset to, to, to be able to model, um, the, the peak flow attenuation reduction that we needed. So we're actually accepting some of Mass D O T's drainage, attenuating it in order to meet these pre and post-flow figures. So, um, I assume Mass D O T will see that as a, as a big benefit to them, because what it does in the current condition is just run into the ditch. So, um, I see them being amenable to this project, and, um, that is all I have. And if there are any questions from the Planning Board, I would love to answer them.
So, it, oh, I, I mean, and I, I think we're both on the same page. I, I understand how expensive a traffic light is.
Yeah.
By all stretch of the means. But the traffic going through here, I believe, is what? Fifty? Fifty? And then I believe it gets to forty down by the, um, by the cemetery down here.
Correct.
What is the plan with Mass Dot in terms of whether it be signage or whatnot to warn drivers coming through the community?
Mm-hmm.
To either slow down, be aware? That'd be my first question. My second question would be with, in lieu of a traffic light, um, is Mass Dot going to clear some of the state line? I guess you would call it, between the, uh, the, uh, road so that visibility as they're coming down the hill, coming into town, that it's visible? Obviously, lights, sirens will be visible, and yes, there is a lo, fairly large clearing.
Yep.
Um, unlike some other station sites. Um, but, you know, I, I, I think safety would be the issue. And it's not so much of our firefighters as it is people barreling down eighteen. I mean, especially, you know, coming downtown, so.
Yeah.
Want to hear your thoughts on that.
Understood, yeah, it's a, there's, there's a twofold answer to that. One is, uh, purely from an operational standpoint. Uh, folks who, uh, operate this machinery still exist on Bedford Street and have done so for a while. Um, so they have always functioned in these conditions, uh, normally, so they're very used to needing to obviously pull out, be visible, have your lights on, but not just the lights on the, in the fire station, uh, not just the lights on the fire apparatus, but also the lights in the fire station, which will be very visible. And so you have these two sets of lights going off, you have, uh, an operator who's very cautious and used to this condition, because they already operate under this condition. Um, and so, you know, having that, having that visibility, having that slow approach, even though, um, you know, there's, there's some small implication to NFPA response time when you pull up to Bedford Street slower so that folks can see you. Um, you know, you do so in such a manner that keeps everyone safe, and, um, you know, there really isn't sort of a noticeable impact to any. And, you know, there really isn't sort of a noticeable impact to NFPA response time relative to the improvement that we're making by putting a fire station here. So that's from an operational standpoint, and I would just say from a letting standpoint, to echo your point. The, the station is going to be very visible. It's called, I'm blanking on the name, but you're basically allowed as a minor activity in the WPA to clear any, it's vista pruning. You're allowed to clear any limbs that you deem necessary in order to increase visibility. And that would be done so through either Mast Dot's own actions or through the, the town's actions. So Mast Dot would be amenable to this because it is a, a public safety concern. This is something that we're already doing and designing around. And if, for, if more sort of clearing of limbs were needed, or even the felling of trees were needed, that would be able to be determined and done so swiftly as needed. But that has been designed around that visibility.
How about signage though? Because that's a, that'd probably be a Mast Dot, their responsibility since it is a state road. So, I mean, obviously they'll put in signage, but, you know, I think the visibility factor as you're coming down that hill.
So.
Are they signed the other way?
So just, just to, so if Mast Dot were to respond, we could always condition for whatever Mast Dot, because if, if it's not done in a fairly timely manner, we could condition for something like that, right Amy? That we could have them?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, acknowledge that you've got good visibility. But, and I'm not worried about it, on traffic coming up from the town, from the intersection down here because it's slower.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You know, I've, I'm the kind of driver you don't want to get behind. But there are plenty of people who come down that road and.
Yeah.
Oh yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it's.
Getting off forty-five on autopilot, just flying through and.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, that, that's something I would definitely want to see.
So I would think Mast Dot would look at maybe speed limit enforcement, whether it's, you know, some sort of change to the speed limit or if.
Yeah, maybe the forty mile an hour gets moved up.
But even if it's signage, can the, is the town able to put signage on the state?
It's a state highway.
So it has to be approved?
No, so, so none of this can happen without DOT.
Yeah, so DOT basically has to make that determination. The town really can't.
Yeah, but I, I think we need to, if, if they don't,
So.
Do what we think. We should lean on them pretty good.
Is there a comment? Do they accept comments?
They require the local approvals to be submitted to them.
Okay.
So if there was some sort of condition of approval that we wanted to place regarding signage, I would be absolutely amenable to it. And it's, you know, usually when I go through Mast DOT comments, there's this sort of like, like workshop that we'll have with them. I'll have like a, like a call with them because we're very early on in that stage. So this is absolutely something I can bring up with them. And I can even submit a letter from the planning board or the conditions from the planning board saying, hey, we have these concerns. We want to make sure that Mast DOT is reviewing this properly, which they are going to. You know, every, every fire station that I've ever done has always, that's always been a comment made by Mast Dot is like, what kind of signage are you doing? How close is it to the station? Far away from the station? You know, it's, it's, it's hard to say. I can't speak for Mast Dot and what they're going to require. If they see that there's some sort of, that's, there's some sort of traffic slowing that's needed, whether they move back to thirty-five mile an hour zone, further back, that's kind of up for them to determine because they're the approving authority on that matter. So if it is deemed necessary, obviously we'd be amenable to it. We're trying to put it in the fire station.
So I mean, my, my thoughts is that either they do something like that with the speed limit or even just include a sign that says fire department ahead, fire station ahead, something like that.
Blinking on the sign.
Amy, do you think that's a reasonable condition? Or do you, are you familiar with conditioning something like that that we could, they could present to Mast Dot?
You can't condition that you're going to require that Mast Dot does something.
Right.
So you can make a finding that the planning board feels that, you know, the planning board finds that due to the location of the proposed station, Mast Dot should implement, or should do, you know, do a study and the planning board recommends a sign. There will be a sign. There's no, there's no question. There will be a sign.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So whether it's flashing or not, I don't know.
Yeah.
But there will be, there will be signs.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll just, we would include that in.
As a finding.
In finding. Okay.
I don't care.
Yes, Chuck?
Yeah, I think, take a look backwards. Look at the stations I'm in now. I think that station uses a worse.
Right.
Traffic location than this one because if you've ever come out of ACE or that brew house or whatever it is, those people are whooping around on this side. And so, and I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, folks, I don't think there's any kind of flashing lights or this, that, and the other thing. Saying there's a fire station, which is set back quite a bit. I'm saying up here, at least this is a fairly straight road. Granted, everybody's zipping along at fifty, sixty or more. Now whether, like, Dan would say if we want to put up a flashing light that just says, "Fire station ahead." I mean, but that's predicated on a decision by the state. But I mean, we don't have them down here. Insofar, in the four years I've been here, there's been no accidents. So, I mean.
Right. It, it has much better visibility.
Yeah.
The speed limit down there is only forty and you, you know, you're.
Oh yeah. If you're trying to get out of ACE, they're coming at you from the left.
Yeah. At about sixty.
Right. Okay, John, did you have any questions, comments?
Yeah, I, I, a couple. On your utility plan, I'm assuming that's a decontamination tank? It's not labeled?
Oh, tight tank?
Yep.
That is a tight tank, yeah. Vent conduit, drain line, and tight tank, referred to plumbing drawings, referred to electrical drawings. Sure, graphical purposes, purposes only. As a civil engineer, I don't own that because what goes into it comes from inside. And I don't know, what happens inside is sort of out of my purview. But it is, it just spoils from any sort of mechanical leakage or fire foam or whatever, harsh chemicals. Anything that shouldn't end up in the septic system or shouldn't end up in the drainage system ends up in the tight tank.
So you're showing for reference. I didn't see a detail for it, so just for reference.
Yeah, not my, not my clown, not my circus over there.
No worries. And then, I didn't see, I don't, it doesn't look like a big grade with the slopes of the, of the driveways?
Yeah, so this was a very laborious task for me in, in the onset of this design process. Really, the, the issue that we have is the roadway is down here at eighty-seven, the existing grade is up here at ninety-three. I need to get from eighty-seven to somewhere where the fire station can be quickly, but not too quickly because the fire apparatus can be a, a, anywhere upwards of sixty feet long. And if you put them at too much of an angle coming into the garage, they hit the top of the garage and can't pull in.
Yeah.
So it's, it was tough to figure that out. So I, I basically end up dropping the grade by quite a few feet and then bringing the grade up quickly and then making it shallow out so that it's, you're at, for the, for the entire approach apron, you're coming in at two, two percent. And then you're coming up at five percent. And this is to just hopefully give enough clearance vertically for the fire apparatus to be able to pull in. Out back, really all I'm trying to accomplish is getting the grade pitching away from the fire station again to be able to collect stormwater and convey it away. And then quickly getting uphill again so that I meet existing grade as quickly as possible so that I'm doing as little cutting of the grade as possible because earthwork costs money.
So it's, it's, yeah, it's pull through and they can go out in that heavy duty, okay?
Yeah.
And then, a couple of things I think, and I didn't see, I know there's the, the ice, I guess the, yeah, the three D on there, but that, do you have elevations of the buildings? I don't think we saw those.
I believe those were.
Are they in there? Before? Oh, they're in the back. Okay, I didn't see the architecturals in the back. And my one last comment was the, I saw that there's the, I know that there's the existing path through the woods. It cuts from Ted Williams behind the tennis courts that goes over to the new, to the new courts. Is that, I saw that it was on the existing, on your existing plan, but I didn't see, does it, is it getting removed or is it getting relocated?
We're very far from that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, because it, as you know, it has a bridge associated with it. The stream barely gets exposed.
Okay, no, I just, it, uh, all right, so the scale, it was a little, I know it was a little different. I just couldn't, it's outside of.
Yeah.
That's fine. I didn't know if, I didn't know if the building was going right through it. I was just getting, just curious if it was still there. I've, I've used that trail a couple of times.
In the summer, you might have trouble even seeing the fire station. It's pretty dense back there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Get twisted around.
Yeah.
And back there. Um, no, that was it. Apologies for the, I didn't realize on the.
Oh yeah, no worries.
Elevations.
Has the color been determined yet? I know that was still up in the air, just out of curiosity. I know people are asking.
I think they're usually red, but.
Red and white.
But the, Mike, you might have a, a comment on that? I don't know.
So, Michael Benhamel, Design Director.
Oh, really?
Secocean Associates.
Oh.
I believe this is a site meeting. What color do you want to know about?
Oh, I was, I was just out of curiosity because it had been asked before about the color. I didn't know if it had been settled on yet for the station.
The color, oh gosh, no. We're trying to stay within a color range and a concept of, you know, being on the cape. So we have not decided on colors of the roof, the facade, or even the garage doors.
Okay.
Those, that's a whole different meeting that we'll have a lot of debate on. And we will be able to give you renderings and options at this point at, at a future time.
Okay. And signage? There's no signage?
Again, the same thing. Today we're here for the site.
Okay.
Signage, we, that's a whole, another wonderful package of creativeness that we want your input for.
Well, we have a sign by law. I did ask the chief, but he, he thought that, you know, it wasn't going to have, you know.
There's no neon. We won't go that way.
It's not going to be like the police station where that never gets lit up.
So, I mean, the classic signage that you need, like stop signs and things of that nature, those are on the plans.
Right.
You know, handicap signs, we have those.
Just for like.
But for, for building signage?
Yes.
So we have to look at dark sky, regulations?
Yep.
How to do something that could be a halo glow? We have a lot of creativeness that we want to show you in the future. But again, today we're looking at site. And we look forward to showing you the other wonderful things that we can do for the architectural.
Okay.
Look on the facade because that's how the, the community's going to see it.
Right, right. Yeah, so, I mean, that is usually, it is now incorporated in our site plan review, so that's why I ask. Is, does anybody else in the audience have any questions? Do you have any questions, Donna? Okay.
Overall, it's a great plan.
Yeah, still have one other.
Steven.
Comments and, and, you know, I kind of feel like we're tailing Charlie's here, but I'm looking at the entrance to this public parking that's right close to that, to that corner, that intersection.
Yeah.
And, you know, that, that bothers me a bit.
Okay, and.
But I, but I know that, you know, where we're at now, it's, it's, it's a little late for wanting to move that around or do something different with that.
Yeah, a little, little strapped for ideal space for it, for sure. One of the biggest things I would say is that there's not really just an ideal space for it otherwise. If you think about an emergency situation, you want the nearest possible entrance point and parking area and access to be, you know, kind of front and center and visible.
Yeah, I understand you want it at the front door.
Yeah.
It just kind of leads, leads you to be making an extra turn there, right where somebody coming in on your, on your tail end, you know, or you're, you're trying to get out where somebody else is coming in potentially a little quicker.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would say that's not really much of a different scenario than what could already happen in the existing situations. The existing conditions, right? Some, I think, you know, somebody could be tailing you right now and, you know, you'd be pulling into the police station with that same level of difficulty. So I, I don't know if this really changes that.
Well, the, the police station comes directly off of, directly off of Bedford Street.
Sure.
Here, here you're, you're maneuvering around the corner from, from somebody.
So as a, as a new, as a new facility, it's a great observation. And I think that we can look at it. I think we've given a lot of thought to it. But your observation is valid and we will look at it again.
Yeah, if, if, if you could, I mean, I, I, I was looking at it thinking, okay, you know, come in off of the, the apparatus pad. And I understand, you know, what the, what the issue is there that you're trying to.
Yeah.
Stay away from it.
I mean, there's so many different components and access points and visual things. But you picking that up, it's valid for us and we'll get it one more time.
Okay, if you could at least think about it, I mean.
Oh, definitely.
I am, you know, you know, I, I see where, where we're at.
Well, I mean, I guess, so the way I see it, this is more accessible parking. Anybody who's going to visit would use that back parking lot too? Or just for the employees?
It's got a gate on it.
Yep.
So.
So if you can see though, um, maybe you can go through.
There, there is additional parking, obviously, right here at the gravel lot and the, the police station. So, I mean, if there was this like, this hypothetical situation where you were in an unsafe position to park here, you would have the ability to continue to the police station and park here. And also go to the gravel lot here if you were unable to make this turn, whatever high speed reason, I guess. But, you know, in terms of accessibility, this is perfectly maneuverable by a passagier vehicle in, in the, in the currently designed state that it's in.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it, it, it's a very normal thing when you do a site plan to make sure that you don't have driveway entrances and exits right near an intersection, right near a corner. You, you move them down, you know.
So the, the, the gate is across the back parking lot where it hits this entrance to Ted Williams?
Correct. The bottom left corner of the septic, where the septic system would be, there's, you'll see, uh, oh. There's going to be a gate there.
Okay.
Are they pulling through that gate or are they going around through the front?
I, I think it's going to be open and, and like sort of during, I actually don't know, that's a sort of a fire department functionality. I don't know what their intention. They, they told me they want a gate. They're going to get a gate. But I, you know, I don't know if they're going to keep it locked all the time, if they're going to keep it open all the time. That's kind of at their discretion.
What about deliveries of like food supplies? And where were those trucks?
They would open the gate for, for any kind of deliveries. Yep. That's, and that's sort of these, these parking spaces back here and this general area back here is kind of doubling for that kind of availability.
Because so from the front Bedford entrance, they only want the trucks going in and out there.
Only want the trucks.
So, I mean, to me, I, I would think that the gate would make sense on the other side of the parking lot so that nobody can access in here and have that as, but, yeah, I guess I'm surprised, I'm surprised that it's at the, the front of the parking lot.
Yeah, and, and, you know, if you, if, if you are saying that potentially utilizing this parking lot over here, then I would think we'd need to do something about marking a crosswalk.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
This is a question we should be addressing to the fire chief. I mean, obviously, that's what they want. Give input to you folks. So I would think that we all should be getting O'Brien back in here to say.
I mean, the, in terms of accessibility across the fire station to the rest of the park, I think that would be a, a, a larger question for the town of Lakeville and potentially even for the recreation department who runs this property, operates this property. It'd be more or less a question, I believe, for them, given that it's, it's not necessarily implicated by the functioning of the fire station, but the functioning of the site as a whole, someone parking in these public areas, which, you know, obviously we know, even looking out there tonight, that, you know, this place sort of swells up with parking. And so, you know, I'm sure that someone attending their child's soccer game or baseball game or something like that is going to try to use those spaces.
Right, that makes sense. They're trying to keep those out.
Certainly accessibility, but that's not, I don't know if that's necessarily under the umbrella of the fire station's development, right? Because that's, that's sort of a recreational deal where, you know, a case brought on by the rest of the park is implicating a fire station.
Well, I wasn't, I, I wasn't looking at it from the rest of the park as, so much as I was parking for the fire station. If somebody, if you're saying that one of the kind of overflow ways of parking for business at the fire station was to park here.
Certainly.
Then you're walking across that driveway and I'm saying, then.
Well, the, the, the intention is for the public to park here and.
Right.
Be able to access the fire department there.
Yep.
And I think that was the first question, is that. Yeah, we got it there. It's a complicated issue.
Yes, I know, I, I know, I know.
All right, well.
Do, well, I know this came up earlier, I mean, I'm making, making, digging, diving deeper in, but will there be a, and then this is beyond, I know, the architectural interior stuff, but will there be a meeting room in there? Like, like, like we're in here right now?
There is the intention to have a meeting room and that's something that I had to learn, uh, very unfortunately through the septic design process. I, my thought was that the meeting room was only for the, the training of staff. And I was false in that assumption and I learned that there isn't, there is some intention to have public meetings there. I, I, I'm not sure in what capacity the town of Lakeville intends to use it, but there will be public meetings.
Now, they, what are they using for parking for that? Cause four spots is a little.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think in, in that kind of scenario, you would open up, cause it is, it is, you know, available for about forty people, that, that meeting space, and you have almost forty spaces on site already. Um, and so between the public parking and the, you know, myriad parking spaces that we have here, um, you would have that availability to fit most of the people there. Otherwise, you would have, um, you know, full parking that's already around.
Okay. And I, I understand that, and I completely understand why they want to have a secluded employee parking lot similar to how.
Yeah.
The police station has their own to keep their vehicles out of the public, um, access.
That's a good question. So to reflect upon that, yes, there's a train center there that can be opened to whatever you need it to be. And of course, you always have the police station as parking, so.
Right, and then the Ted Williams, the whole area.
So that's been the general conversation in regards to parking.
Yeah.
From the committee.
And I don't know if there's really any plan to shift planning board, Concom zoning, over to the station. I think this is really meant to be that public meeting setting, so, you know, I, I don't know one way or the other if there's an intention to be that many public meetings there. But I know for certain that, that the line shared in public meetings that occur with Lakeville likely aren't just going to move to the fire station.
No, I, I think that, that building's.
But as another option, I believe.
Yeah, correct.
Right, I also think that, that, that building's primary use is a little bit different than this primary use where fire station, that's their home, where the police are out and about. So that's fine, we'll, we'll go on, we'll leave it for now. We'll leave that one alone.
So, um, you know, typically, we have a decision with conditions. Obviously, this is going to be a little bit different because we're dealing with the town as opposed to, you know, any sort of a surety and all that. Um, so we would probably whittle it down.
Well, it's site plan. So there's no, there would be no surety or anything like that because it's only site plan approval. So, um, yeah, you would go.
So I'm just trying to think of what else we would, I mean, everything else that.
Um, so it would be a standard site plan review, you know, a site plan approval can, um, decision.
Okay.
With conditions, with findings. Um, I'm not sure.
Oh, it's the fees that we asked for, that's what it is, the fees. But so we, we've already waived.
We've received it.
Yep.
We're good with that, okay. And then add the findings.
Mm-hmm.
As you had suggested. Um, do we think that this is something we want to approve conditionally? I mean, they've already gone Board of Health and Conservation. Conservation did the storm art appear review. At this point, I don't know what else. Yes, Chuck?
Well, I mean, I'd go back to my earlier comment and I surely don't want to have any more meetings that we already have.
Yeah.
And I think you gentlemen done a great job. But I would think you would be good, mindful of the questions that would venture back and forth. To have the fire chief here, tell him, say, this is why I want that gate, or this is why I want that parking here. I mean, we're making these decisions devoid of him.
Right, well, so, I mean, there is a committee, they've, they've held public meetings, you know, we could watch them and, and hear those conversations as well as what has been had, um.
And all of our design, pardon, all of our design decisions have been in parallel with the fire staff.
Okay.
But also on the committee, we have the zoning enforcement, we've got a member of select board. I forget who else.
Building Commissioner.
Right, um, Town Administrator. Um. So I'm assuming that they've hashed all these things out?
Yes, I mean, nothing that we're showing here wasn't something that wasn't properly vetted by the fire department staff. Uh, almost as a whole, you know, it's, it's, it's one thing to go to the fire chief. It's another to go to all the staff in the fire department, uh, and ask about the folks who are operating the apparatus or cleaning the station or doing whatever. Um, and those are folks, uh, Secoshion and myself have also consulted to make these decisions. So, um, this is, this is a very human-centered design and all the features that you see are to cater to that.
Mm-hmm.
And I mean, our main question is about the gate and the parking.
Mm-hmm.
Do we want to send a question about those things?
I guess, that's something with that, it'd be easy to further on in design development, construction documents. Uh, we were not just letting this stop. There's a whole nother process and other steps that we're gonna be presenting to you.
Okay, so, I mean, we'll continue it anyways because you.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Did you plan on coming, coming back and?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I'd like to seek approval.
You, you asked about, you know, when it first sat down, you asked about color.
Right.
Oh, that is another wonderful step that I will be involved with.
Okay.
We have a lot more time together here.
Okay.
Well, I have, I mean, I have to laugh, you, you've got elevation drawings somewhere.
Yeah, so I had, I had grabbed a set of plans from, um, Kathy's office. They had, it was on the back. I don't know why, was it not?
Yeah, I mean, I, I.
The original.
Oh, we're reading on this.
Yes, this is revised, I had the original.
Oh, okay, I, I, I was gonna ask and say, the, the architect on the board is the only one that doesn't have the architect.
Sorry.
Yeah, it was under the original filing, all the.
Trying to hide it from the one guy who might say something.
Yeah, so it was submitted in the original filing.
Okay.
Okay, so do we want to send a memo back asking a couple of questions in regards to the parking and, and, um, the gate?
Yes.
Okay.
It's fine. Um. So what's our, so we're gonna send the questions back, but were you looking to do an approval tonight?
I mean, not.
You said conditions first, right?
Why don't you, um, if you're, if you have a question that needs to be answered, why don't you, in the meantime, draft your decision?
Mm-hmm.
And at least you have a skeleton decision you can work off of.
Yep.
So at the next meeting, you can wrap everything up.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds good. So we can send, send back a question, the planning board had questions about parking, availability. Um, the gate as well as the, um, location of the front parking lot with the turning radius? Or how did you mind this?
I, I, I mean, I recognize that there's probably not much you can do.
Right, exactly.
On that, I mean, whether or not you want to make them include in, in their work of markings for a crosswalk.
I would be worried about stepping on Recreation's toes, uh, or the toes of the.
You already have with this.
Sure. That's sort of, you know, predicated on the fire station. But, um, I would, I would love to get Recreation's input on something like that because I, I don't know what they would want, where they would want it. Um, I wouldn't want to just put, start putting things on the plans that affect the rest of the site that we weren't sort of handed by them, um, without their sort of notice and, um, recommendations and whatnot.
Okay. So in the meantime, we'll draft a set, a standard set of conditions.
Yep.
With that finding. Um, and we will continue to.
For August fourteenth?
Yeah, does that work for you, August fourteenth?
Well, as, as a country architect. Um, one that doesn't apparently go to these meetings a lot. May we get approval for these sites in conditions of meeting the requirements that you set about parking?
Well, so I don't think we are trying to impose conditions about the parking, just more of like clarification on those.
Of course, I, I'm just trying, honestly, I'm just trying to get a vote.
So if we close the hearing?
That says yes, and then we will design to whatever.
But so if we, if we close the hearing this evening, we wouldn't be able to get more input from you? So we don't want to close it. So we, we want to leave it open, we'll, we'll draft, right?
Exactly, I mean, I guess if you get something in writing from, say, the fire chief regarding the parking, I'm not sure they need, they need to come back.
Mm-hmm.
Because all you would do is you would get the answer and then you would take your decision that has been, you need to draft a decision in any event.
Yeah.
So you're not losing one minute of time by doing what you're doing. You would still have to vote on your decision at the next meeting. So, um, here, all you're doing is you're leaving it open.
Right.
To gather, you know, information in the next two or three weeks. I think it might be three weeks.
Three weeks, two weeks.
Thank you.
I guess one of the, one of the questions that I have is what would, let's say the answer to the gate question. I mean, I've answered the gate question, right? It's, it's so that the fire personnel can have their own separate parking lot. That's why it was asked and that's why we're doing it. Um, what is, what is the nature of the gate question that's going to change someone's mind on, uh, like approving a fire station? I guess is, is, is what I don't understand.
Right, it's not, it's not the approval, it's the, it's the decision that you have to, they have to vote on a decision. The decision has findings and then the decision has conditions. And so they have to vote on that. So they would be voting on that at the next meeting in any event.
Right.
So all they're doing is leaving it open to get, gather further information, but.
Much to your point, we're not losing time.
Correct.
Honestly, I draw pretty pictures for a living. I appreciate your, your time and education.
And us is yours as well, so I think.
So, yeah, cause even if we closed it tonight, we would still have to wait till next meeting to vote on it.
Right.
You don't have the condition. So all we're gonna do is, like we did on the last, on the last item we had, was that we closed it and voted, right?
On the, on the ADU.
On the ADU.
You had the draft decision and you voted on it.
Right, we closed it and it voted on the same day. So that's all we're doing is leaving it open in case something comes up between now and the three weeks.
Right. Cause I, I mean, obviously, as far as you've gotten, I don't see any of this changing at this point. And, um, I think just some clarification, maybe what did, how, how do they see that gate working, operating? Is someone gonna be manning it? Is it gonna be automatic? Is it key card? I don't know what they have in mind.
There's, we're not running any conduit to it, so it will be manual.
So it is manual.
So that, I mean, that begs the idea that it might be just left open.
So it could be left open.
Yeah.
Right, okay. At certain times and then close it others.
Yeah, it may be at the discretion of the fire department for public safety use.
Right, that makes sense, if there's like a big event going or.
Yeah, like, um.
Soccer.
Soccer, Saturday, soccer, they'll, they'll close it.
And if you have fire personnel trickling in the morning, you wouldn't want to just keep opening and closing it.
Yep.
You know, Michelle, did they have, recently, I think of the town as to be Lakeville Day and they had the fire stations open, the kids come open, jump on the trucks.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure.
So where are all these people gonna park their cars? How are we gonna make access to it?
On the grass, if they do, for everyone else.
Yeah.
They just park up and down the.
It's very discretionary on the fire department's front, really.
I am, and they're public, it's always been public, so, um.
And to me, that solves the parking issue, cause if that's open for additional parking needs, then I'm not worried about the floor in the front. Or two, because two seems.
Meetings or whatever it may be.
Um.
Okay.
Do we want to bother sending the, the questions then at this point? Or do you feel satisfied?
I'm fine, I mean, I'm.
I'm satisfied myself, I don't know if you.
Yep.
All favoritizes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, let's just go through our, our regular process here, you know, don't, don't close the.
Okay, so we won't send the questions, though?
No.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll, yeah, go ahead.
So we'll, uh, we'll let somebody else make a motion to continue to.
I'll make a motion to continue twenty-eight Precinct Street to, um, our next meeting, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Say it again.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, uh, just help me understand quickly, would it be necessary for me to come back in the, uh?
So we'll draft the decision and conditions, Kat, uh, Kathy can forward it to you to review and if you have any comments, you can send it back. Otherwise, if you want to come and speak to anything, you're welcome to, if not, then.
Would you folks need me to, uh?
Non, non, unless, I'm, so I, I guess, how's the conditions work? We wouldn't, we wouldn't need you back.
Yeah, cause I feel as though it would be more, a little bit more whittled down because it's a town project.
Town, no, we won't need you back.
Yeah, understood, yeah, I, I didn't think the public, once you closed the meeting, I didn't think there was any sort of input period for me anyway after, after that moment.
Can I come back?
Yeah.
Yes, you can.
Always, always.
We'll leave it in open.
Colors and pictures and stuff.
You can come back and show us the pictures. We'd love to see it. I know that's been a question asked, so I think as soon as it's known, I think everybody wants to know. What color is it gonna be? All right.
I like you.
Thank you all for coming.
Awesome.
Thank you for my three thoughts.
All right, I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you. All right, agenda item number five, public hearing, definitive subdivision ninety-two Howland Road, which was continued to this evening upon the application of LMB Realty Trust for approval of a definitive subdivision plan submitted by Zenith Consulting Engineers for a two lot subdivision assessors map twelve, block two, lot twenty-six, possible vote. We do have a request to continue from the applicant to August fourteenth. If someone would like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to continue ninety-two Howland Road to August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Say it again.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The hearing is continued. We're gonna skip down to seven because we already handled six. Um, OSRD update, possible vote. Actually, I'm gonna wait until Kathy gets back. Um, so number eight, administrative update on the next item down, Lakeville Hospital update. We do have in our packets, there was an email that I received from the town administrator. He had reached out to, um, Rhino Capital, just asking them for an update. And.
I'm almost there.
Oh, here it is, okay. Um.
Oh.
Okay, so the update is, we are working all avenues on the demolition and remediation front. We believe we've identified a nonprofit partner to support efforts towards being eligible for the Mass Development Brownfield Fund. However, those conversations are still very conceptual. I'll keep you posted as we make more progress. I wish I had more concrete feedback, but it's a slow and steady grind to get a project of this scale moving. We're hopeful to see activity on site this calendar year. How are things going in Lakeville as the town's still in compliance with the MBTA Communities Act? That will be necessary as we try to seek support from the state. And the answer to that question is yes, we are still in compliance. And, um, unfortunately, that's, that's about the extent of the update, but that's what it is. And I'd like to stay positive with that moving forward. Um, okay, let's see.
Someone, someone didn't say the estimate was around, what, seventeen million dollars?
I think it keeps going up every time I hear, yeah. Master plan, it was.
Fifteen or seventeen or something.
So, um, sorry, um, Adam, so, um, grant writing, so was a, a synopsis of the project and everything put together? What was it, Serpents, like did that, like?
Oh, for the OSRD?
Yeah.
So, that was Kathy had reached out to Serpents. So, actually, I'll go back because we're on administrative update, we'll go back to OSRD. I wanted to go back, but. Uh, so number seven, OSRD update, possible vote, so that's the Open Space Residential Development. Uh, Kathy had reached out to Serpents with our question about using the twenty hours and Serpents said, well, instead of using your twenty hours, there may be possibility. And so if you could, so obviously, Taylor, cause I was gonna ask her and she's like, oh, no, it must be someone else, so.
Okay. So she said it was, I believe, Michelle, um, but Danica is involved in that also. So there's a grant available where they would take what you have, go through it, and you wouldn't have to use your hours. So the deadline was August first and you'll know by August twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth, and just the end of August. Um, but she was comfortable saying it would be ready for a fall town meeting.
Nice.
Because I mean, I told her that's when we want it for, so.
But I mean, town meeting warrant might close in September, and if they're not going to know until the end of August, like, we're really getting close. And I do want to, want to bring this to town meeting.
Sorry, what's the date for the one?
I don't know yet, I think they haven't announced it yet, has, have you heard? I thought they were saying it was going to open in August. So I would assume it's usually open for about a month.
Yeah. If needed, do you think we could go back and say?
So we could send a placeholder, if we, if they can say yes, we'll have it, we can, you know, say, tell the select board to hold, you know, put a placeholder on the town meeting for fall. And hopefully, maybe because it is just those three items that we've worked through, maybe they will be able to help us. Because I know that was something that Master Plan Implementation, they're very, you know, adamant about getting that. Seeing that come, coming down, and Rita was even saying that we had a version from Serp Ed a number of years ago that they had drafted, but my thought was, let's not, let's not start, so.
I never saw it though.
But like, I didn't want to go back and start with a new draft, since we've already worked through with all the other boards and committees, so.
Yeah, but they'll go through it, and they'll say, yes, you definitely need this, or you don't, or you should add, so, I mean, I guess this is like a really big thing. Like, we had gone to that, like, little seminar, you know, you had the materials of what towns around are here are doing.
Right, yeah, that was extensive, so hopefully, they'll be able to just, maybe just do like Taylor did today and come in for a meeting, draft something up, or, you know, edit, and then hopefully, we can go forward with that. So I guess the only thing we wanted to vote on was, because it was kind of a last minute thing, I just made the executive decision to say, yes, go ahead, let them, you know, apply for the grant, because it had a cutoff date, so that couldn't wait to this meeting. But I know we had all agreed on the Serp Ed hours, so.
That's great.
We want a vote to pursue funding, whatever grant funding source, yeah, that Serp Ed can, if someone wants to make that motion.
Make a motion, I'll make a motion to pursue the grant to, for Serp Ed to review our OSRD.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And then, back to number eight, administrative update. I did just read the Lakeville Hospital update, Kathy, so now we're on the Economic Development Committee update. We have your agenda from the meeting, was there anything else you wanted to share? So Dan, the next meeting is August eleventh at six o'clock.
Yeah, I mean, it was just an intro, I forget the names, I was going to watch that meeting today just to get the name of the chair and the vice chair. So I apologize, I didn't have a good afternoon. And I, I don't think I included it, just as they had gone through the agenda, like, there was a grant that was applied for, for economic development.
Okay.
And that, if they get that grant, then that, we'll kind of take a look at the town, it had that plan, which would be great.
And Andrew actually mentioned that during the Master Plan Meeting too.
Yeah.
So.
And that was basically it, though.
And thank you again, Kathy.
Oh, no problem.
So did they establish a standing meeting date, is that August eleventh, is that?
Like Mondays, I think it was the second or third Monday.
Second Monday going forward, at six P M, and it's here typically, police station?
Sounds great.
And just the one thing that I, when I was reading the charge, talking about like changing the different bylaws, so just my question would be like, are they going to be working with that Z Brac, or is this something different? So that planning board number is going to be really important.
The Z Brac?
Yeah.
Well, so economic development, and now zoning bylaws, yeah, so there's going to be two new committees that are looking at zoning, and we still don't have a planner, I feel like that's.
I was going to say, yeah.
That's still that, that bridge that we are missing, right? So.
Do we know when the Z Brac meetings, like, is that, and that started?
I haven't heard anything.
And they know that you're on it, so they'll be, they should be contacting you.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, so hopefully.
Not that I've seen yet. No, just the economic development. Anything else? All right. Our next, number nine, our next meeting is August fourteenth, twenty twenty five, at the Lakeville Police Station. We also have a joint meeting on August fifth with the Select Board.
Is that six o'clock here, or they start at seven?
I don't know if I, let me look.
I think they start their meetings kind of early.
Well, they start earlier.
Like, do you say five or something?
They do, yeah. Six thirty, six thirty on August fifth.
So are we the first item usually?
That was August fifth.
Fifth, yeah, Tuesday.
Oh, I'm, I'm not sure, but I guess we can try to pin that down, because obviously, we're going to have to post a meeting for a specific time, and I'm going to be away, so John's, I asked John to chair, so that I can just call in and, you know, if my connection isn't good or whatever, like, I don't have to.
Yeah, and I know Tracy was already reached out to Lakeville to see.
And she sent it, so I do have it, I do already have this on me, so that's good.
Eight five eight fourteen.
And welcome, Donna, do you have any questions?
Well, I have a lot of questions stirring through my head, but it's okay. I just wanted to thank Kathy for, you know, forwarding all this stuff and helping me the other day at the hall. And just a warm welcome, and thank you very much. Let me know if there's something that I should be doing that I'm not, I did do my homework and read and, you know, getting to know terminology and stuff.
A lot of light reading.
Yeah, a lot of reading.
We still have things up.
What's that? No, I don't think so.
We talked about that with, at the Bella Wave.
Oh, yeah, you know, just the zoning bylaws, read through that, familiarize yourself with that, the rules and regulations, that's what we're working on updating with Serp Ed. So what's there now, I mean, familiarize, you know, you could read through it, but it, that's what we'll be working on updating with Serp Ed's help. Other than that, yeah, feel free to ask any questions, if you want to come in, just let me know, you know, like, if I, if I.
Sure thing.
Don't ask you, but yeah, welcome and.
And we are trying to skip the twenty eighth.
Yes, so we're trying to forego our second August meeting, so usually, it used to be we'd, we wouldn't have that last meeting of August. The last year or two, we've still had it because it's been so busy, but we're going to try to.
Yeah, we can try one at the end of the year too, it never happens. I feel like it's so, it's so busy in December.
All right, all right, so at this point, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.